City Council Committee of a Whole Meeting to order if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have every council member present except for Councilman Dan Collison, which he did notify me of a stomach flu. Hopefully he's here for City Council, but we'll see that. Committee meeting items, number one is police presence at meetings. This is a continued discussion. We've also had this on City Council as well, we're looking for a direction for this one so we can be done and over with with this item. From the council. Do we, do we want to have them at every meetings? Do we want to keep it the same? Do we want to have them at Committee of the Whole, City Council? Do we feel the need to have them at Park and Rec? I guess we're looking for some type of direction.
Mayor Council, what you have included in this packet that is different from the last discussion is a breakdown of costs. Taken into consideration, it depends which level of officer is in pay by looking at a step one officer, what that would be, and then also a step seven. So kind of best and worst case scenario for the cost to the city to have them at those, what is eight meetings? With also an assumption on the estimated meeting time, of course, that fluctuates. We took approximately an average when Mike computed these numbers for us.
I guess to me it's just the first two. Of course, they're already at the planning commission if they're at the regular City Council meeting and they have the development authority, but... I don't see him for the need.
Well, we'll say they need to come here anyway because of every report.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're really here with something on that, so. But I do, I, anything out of the other boards, I don't see any reason for it.
Well, closer special meetings, I sent over to the public. Of course, we have a special meeting coming up, does that went open to the public?
Yes, it is. Councilmember, like, the special meetings are open to the public and they're closed as such for closed meetings, the beginning part, and then you have to reopen an open session after the closed session, so that that, both of those are open to the public as well.
What I'm gathering is any meeting that's open to the public is what the worry is. Councilman Lawrence is entered the room. This was, might be a question directed at him. For the police presence at all meetings, Councilman Lawrence, I was wondering, we're looking for a direction to give staff and what we're looking for.
Where are our councils to do with it? Council decisions, where are we going to do?
There are some numbers here that was provided from Finance Director Mike Becker and what that would cost the city.
Why ask for staff if we're in a, if we're in a, Ms. Woods said, Wood said that she thought it was necessary, is that correct?
What's your opinion, Ms. Wood?
My opinion is if it is a meeting that's open to the public, I don't know how we would justify having it at some and not others. We have staff at all these meetings, we do have at least one council member at all of these meetings. We haven't, to my knowledge, ever had an issue of concern of a threat or anything like that nature in some of these, or, I mean, I can specifically say myself has attended many Park, Rec and Culture meetings. But I think it would be potentially challenging to pick some over others unless you want the deciding factor to be it's at meetings where all council members are present, and that would rule out only one of those, which would be the Park, Rec and Culture.
How many council members are there?
Just one, it is Mayor Johnson.
It's me.
But we definitely don't need one there.
No.
But that may be a way that if you wanted to have a deciding factor is which meetings all council member, it would be that which ones are public because they're all.
You're going to look at an average on Park and Rec, even though you say an hour, asking your average is half an hour. You know, that's going to be hours of an officer's time period. So if we took that equation, you're looking at, saying to why you don't know it here. Because most likely it is going to be the chief that would be in because you don't want to take somebody off the street.
Or they'd have to, they'd have to manage their schedule to accommodate, yeah, that would be difficult for a short stint of time, so, yeah, it would be.
I think we'd be good with regular City Council meetings, Committee of the Whole, closed session meetings, goal settings. I, I think actually across the board that would be good minus the Park and Rec. I don't, I don't think it's necessary in that one. Otherwise, I, I, I don't see any reason why not to have an officer at those meetings.
I concur.
Okay, Mayor Council, this is just for discussion here and a reminder, it is on City Council this evening to then take a vote and to move forward with the reclamation. Thank you.
Herefore, we move on, move on to D two, the Dolling Avenue Continued Discussion. Also looking for a direction on this one. I was the one that brought this to the council. I was just asking from resident complaints that there be no parking on the west side of Dolling Avenue.
Although, I'll go along with that. I think that was, we should do that, I think it's, you know, we're going to start, we're going to start looking at other streets that need to be addressed, and I think that's a first good start. I do agree that it is pretty tight in there. That obviously we discussed Dolling Avenue being another one that's very tight in there.
Rarities already been posted.
So I think that, I think we should do that, I think we limit it to one side. And I think the west side being no parking because they can always pull in the Federated parking lot. The church has got that other open area over there. They're eliminating a half a dozen spots, so I think that's a good choice.
You had a discussion with the owner of Rodneywood, did I, I saw that on the board?
Yep, and that was what I provided at the last council meeting, was I did have a discussion with, um...
You were asked for that, huh?
As well as Federated and gentlemen at the New Hope Church as well.
Yeah, I thought that side of the street, the New Hope, Rodneywood side of the street, to me that makes the most sense.
Two of the three did, were in favor of it being on the west side. Now, it doesn't affect all of the west side because that is a parking lot on the, maybe a third of that street. So from two thirds to Heritage, so to say, that's estimating, it would be in that section. Rodneywood did not state really if they were for or against it, but as I showed the concerns. Yeah, he had concerns that if we're looking to do this to be proactive, that we look at all the streets at the same width, that was his request. If the mayor, or Mayor Council, the intent is to look at this to be posted, it would be brought back to Committee of the Whole because our no parking street sections are defined within city code, so we need a amendment to that.
Is it also, is it also the normal possibility to do, how do the street on the west side, or on the east side? Because I can't imagine, why would, why would you want to park and then walk across the street to go to Rodneywood Parking or Rodneywood Coffee Shop?
You'd be parking on Rodneywood's side.
You'd park on Rodneywood's side.
The west side is the east, that's the east side, there are.
You're backwards, north is this way.
West side is on Federated's side.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, why wouldn't you want to park, why wouldn't we want to park down by Rodneywood on the east side of the street?
That's what we're saying, we're putting no parking on the west side.
Oh, I thought you said that we were parking on the east side.
No, west side.
Okay, never mind.
I, if you ask me, come, draw back in front of Committee of the Whole, or is it?
I believe, well, all ordinance says it's in a, ordinance correct on, or?
Or can we just bring this right to the council?
The way the code is set up, all ordinance would come back before you, so we prepare an ordinance and bring it back to the next committee of the whole.
Okay.
All right, I suggest that's what we do.
I concur. Gentlemen?
Concur.
All right. Moving on to D three, City Council Agenda Request. This was done by Mr. George Heeman, which is not present.
Do we have any code that residents can request agenda items?
Councilmember Lawrence, we do have it where it, agenda requests can be made by any residents or anyone to City Council, but to get to City Council, it doesn't need to be reviewed by committee, it used to be DAP committee, and now it's Committee of the Whole.
All right, thank you.
My understanding is he just can't speak on this item, correct?
Uh, we do not have a citizen input per se forum at Committee of the Whole. However, I will say that this, he will have his opportunity to speak on behalf of his property and the assessment of the public hearing at City Council this evening.
So he's having his, is that what, I read he's having an assessment hearing this?
This evening.
This evening, right?
Correct.
We did find the Act over fifteenth nineteen ninety-one, it should be in front of you. We did find that one, defines a little bit more than the numbers. Or I should say staff found that, sorry.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, so no action or consensus needs to be made on this, we can move on to item number four.
D four, Stop Sign Request on Fifth Avenue, that would be Fifth and Birch, gentlemen, which is uncontrolled this time.
Yes, I had a request come in from the Cambridge-Izany School District, I believe it was the safety coordinator. He and the district had concerns over this intersection. There is not a stop sign along Fifth Avenue, which does have a crosswalk and it does have a school bus stop there. There are a lot of kids that will, that kind of hang out there in the morning and then when they get off the bus in the evening, and their concern was safety of cars zipping through there. Uh, there is intersections, a four-way stops near there, but not at this particular one. I did ask engineering to look into it to see if the stop sign was warranted. It is not perhaps warranted because there haven't been a number of accidents reported there. But given that there is a curb that goes along to the north, it is, I think it's staff's recommendation that it could warrant a stop sign for safety and because of that crosswalk there.
It's not an uncontrolled intersection, it's a two-way stop, right?
Correct.
I said that wrong, sorry.
There's sometimes a long birch. There, yep.
There is one long birch?
There is one long birch, not along Fifth.
So is this a, is this a area just for an accident waiting to happen? I mean, if you studied it, maybe there's been no accident there, but is it just waiting to happen, or kids dodging out of the way of cars?
Um, well, I guess at this location, there's a crosswalk at an uncontrolled crossing, and so those are usually recommended to have a stop condition just so that cars aren't just blasting through full speed. They have a time to stop, evaluate if someone's trying to cross, you know, the person, the pedestrian is also, you know, going to see a car stop and then know to cross. So it'd be a good situation to add one. Technically, on the stop sign warrants from MINDA, their standards are, you know, relatively extremely high on vehicle traffic and number of accidents, three accidents in the last twelve months would be required for a warranted required stop sign. But this type of condition and meeting the rest of the neighborhood, the expectation of this is, looks like a four-way stop condition, people treat it that way, you know, they certainly could add the stop signs on the north and south driveways and it would make sense.
Thank you. Do you have any opinion, if you ever, does anybody ever monitor that?
It'd make the residents happy, you know, so. It doesn't not make sense, I don't see why not, but it. There are a whole bunch of yield signs over there, just down the block too, that I think could be replaced, but.
Mayor Council, I also would like to mention, I did take a phone call, interestingly enough, today regarding a stop sign concern along Sixth Avenue between Dogwood and South Passage, I'd asked her to put up the request in writing so I could present it. I haven't gotten that email yet, but there are other concerns in that, just with trying to moderate speed of people to not have that straight stretch. So just to let you know that there could be other areas.
The Public Works guys just know where these spots are, could tell us, so they could just address them all at once.
I could ask them, I did specifically ask them regarding this intersection, they said that they slowed down and they think that there should be a stop sign as well for plowing when they go down that route, but.
I, I get a handful more just by talking to them and.
I agree.
I agree.
They know the roads better than anybody with the long times they drove, they drive them in winter and every day, so, same thing with PD.
Correct. So, so correct me if I'm wrong here, council members, that we, we think that this stop sign at Fifth and Birch should go in and we should possibly ask Public Works to assess others, yeah.
And I can bring that information back to Committee of the Whole for next month, if they have any other recommendations. We do have stop signs imposed and stuff, and it is relatively inexpensive, so it does not meet the threshold that this does need to be approved by council. So it'd be your discretion if you would like it to be put in through council to have a stop sign installed, or if you direct staff to do so.
I know it was also mentioned by Councilman Lawrence that we asked the police too, so, do you have any recommendations for stop signs or?
I think you go ahead and put, or I'm going to start putting stop sign applied and then let's try our, on Fifth and Birch, and then let's get some other ones back brought to us at another time in, in a timely fashion so we can address, I'll call a chip on for other, I'll do it individually.
Yeah.
And then at that time, I can put together a cost for all them, if it, depending on how many it is, just so council's aware of that cost too, so.
That works. Think good enough direction, Ms. Wood?
That is, thank you.
All right, let's move on to D five, request from Rum River BMX, who is present at this time, a few gentlemen would step forward. Oh, we can't do that, can we?
We typically don't.
Yeah, we don't, sorry, guys.
I'll present the item, if there's some concerns or questions, we could ask them, sorry for the confusion. So Mayor Council, I did receive a request from Rum River BMX, and they are very excited and eager to apply for their next national event here within the city of Izany, which is, like I said, very exciting. They have a proposal submit date of May first, and that would be for a national event in two thousand twenty. They have two requests, one of them is one that we have done before, which is to get the city's support that they can submit with their application for this national event. Uh, in the past, it had been a letter that I drafted and the mayor had signed, so I'm looking for consensus from this, from the council, if that is something that we are in support of.
Are they asking for any money to be put up by the city to secure a national spot?
Well, I'll go into their next request, their next request is to have the pay structure looked into for the parking that is occurring at the national event. So what's included in this packet is the agreement, which we have a lease agreement amendment, which was done in two thousand eighteen to include special event parking, which is the parking area on the grass. Currently with that agreement, they get their ticket stubs and things from the city, and then they monitor all that, they have volunteers who manage the parking, and the split is seventy-five percent to the city of the revenue and twenty-five percent to Rum River BMX. What they are requesting is to have that be considered something different, and I can tell you what staff's recommendation would be if it's something to consider, um, different for that national event, because the national event does have a lot of costs, and that is incurred by Rum River BMX.
Here's my opinion on this, and I'd like to bring some history of how this BMX contract came up. I did not write the BMX contract, BMX, actually, I was in Dolling Council at the time. But BMX was asked how they want the contract to be structured. They were given the contract and they were, there was specific, specific conversations about that parking lot and how the parking lot would be paid for. BMX at that time did not want anything to do with the parking lot. The taxpayers of the city of Izany paid for that parking lot because the BMX didn't want it in the lease agreement of the track. So the parking lot sitting there was paid for by city taxpayers. It was not paid for by the lease agreement. And that decision was made by BMX because they did not want to entertain that parking lot cost into the lease at that time. So with that said, that's why we came up with the fee structure to collect fees for the parking lot and have it split. Because the parking lot's owned by the city and was paid by the city, it was not owned, it was not built into the lease of BMX. So if BMX, if BMX wants to now collect all the money for the parking, they should be paying for the original cost of the lot in their lease structure. Which they're not doing. So the original lease was set up, BMX chose not to have the parking lot, which was BMX's choice. So why should we now choose to give BMX all the money when the city residents paid for the parking lot?
Uh, Mayor Council, from, I hear what you're saying, and a lot of that, I was involved in a lot of that, so I was here back in two thousand fourteen in that role, and when the lease was agreed on, and you're right, there was discussions of that parking lot. Uh, we were never considered, they were, Rum River BMX, and it was the board at that time, was not interested in having any fees incurred by that parking lot, so.
They knew that they weren't allowed to charge for it at that point.
I believe so, I believe that board did, which, just so the other council members know, is different than the people who are on the board.
That doesn't matter.
No, I'm just letting.
Can she have a chance to speak, Councilman Lawrence, please?
Um, and that re, that lease was first set up in two thousand fourteen, I think I said that. Um, but when the parking came up and we had discussions with the, I believe, most of the current people on the board in two thousand eighteen regarding parking, it wasn't just the parking lot, but it was also the grassy area because they wanted to be able to have camping as an, as an option, which is a great thing to be able to add to their events. I think what, what perhaps they could be asking for, and staff and I, we discussed this, is it would really need to be looked upon if the city wanted to do a donation. So instead of, and you're just, this is just an option, instead of amending the current lease and doing a different parking option for just the one national event, which is what their exact request is, the city could consider, council could consider, if they wanted to look at the revenue that would come in from that event and think about doing a donation, which would be something similar that, and that's by council action, like we do for the movie nights, we have a volunteer group and we give them back our revenue. Just as an option.
I guess I would lean on Finance Director Lankel Becker and ask if that was feasible.
If, if the council wants to provide funds to BMX in this manner, it does need to be a form of donation. If that's the way the council wants to go, it does need to, does need to work like we do the movie nights.
Which I for one don't think it's a bad idea to give back to our community, so to speak. Um, we all know that it's not all community, but the majority of it is.
They start donating to one, one group like that, or it won't be asked by everybody, that was an annual, I can attest to that, that was an annual back in the early two thousands.
I think Ms. Woods brought up a good point, that, you know, unless we're going to hire city, unless we're going to ask city workers to go out there and run the, run the parking, you know, it's a convenience for us to have volunteers out there running the parking lot. Didn't I, I read somewhere we're getting seventy-five percent of the money and they're getting twenty-five, or how?
Correct, of the revenue that, that is collected from the parking, and I believe, and we could read through this specifically, but it is to assist with being able to restore if there was any grass damage or any yard damage and things like that to, to fix anything. So we have to make sure that we accept it, that if there was some kind of damage, or maybe have something different of an agreement during that event. Uh, but per their, especially them permits, they do assume liability of any damage that, that occur, that is written in there. Um, to speak to Councilmember Lawrence's point, there are other organizations within the city, so, and I do believe, and I have to look into more details for specifics, but for example, I think it's Cambridge-Izany Soccer Association does do some big events too, so that would be something that should be looked at if there is, if you're into for one, do you do for all, or just for national events, or, to put it that way.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Lawrence on, on that aspect of that point, but this national event is, you know, I mean, I think I started to go in it every year, I doubt that either. It's a one-time thing, what I don't, you know, this would have to be brought up, it's not, we're going to give it to you today and who does it for? Unless that camp gives up. They're going to bring a lot of people into this community, and that, people that come into this community are spending money at the gas stations.
Suddenly, the hotel, the liquor store, it's all over.
It's all over. I mean, it's not going to be something that's just going to benefit them.
But this parking fee's not going to make or break the event.
Nice to meet you.
Uh, perhaps, Mayor Council, we want to find out what the revenue and, um, Mike, would you be able to provide, you happen to know what the revenue is?
As long as I, as long as I have some estimate on the number of vehicles, I can certainly come up with a number, although we think we might gather a total and, uh, as, as share twenty-five, seventy-five, yeah.
Mayor Council, would you like to ask?
Well, he.
The Rum River BMX participant to approximate how many vehicles they would expect for such an event?
I'd like to know.
It's hard for staff to speculate that number?
I'd like to know.
Mr. Robinson, if you could approach the podium in the speaker, or, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, just make sure you adjust it if you would.
So typically, um, the actual number of cars, we've had two national events since the building got built. Uh, the actual number of cars there, we don't know because we haven't been able to monitor and track the cost. I do have some statistics from USA BMX based on what their typical is, and their typical expectations throughout the three days between the practice and the two days of the event is somewhere between twenty-five hundred to six thousand participants each day. So if you extrapolate that out, you're probably somewhere between.
Three and four thousand cars?
They typically assume three people per racer is kind of their natural standard. No, they usually say figure three people per racer, so.
Three vehicles or three people?
Three people per racer.
So that's two people per car.
Assume three people per car is what their normal standard is what they figure. Of course, we have no idea, um, right now it's just a proposal to get a national event, so we don't know specifics on time of year, stuff like that. Of course, that can make a difference on how large the event could be.
What's the charge per?
So the national standard, so in BMX, there is no fee as a spectator, but if you go to a national event, the average track is charging twenty-five dollars for a weekend pass or ten dollars per day. So you get a little discount if you do the package for the three days. And typically somewhere between fifty and a hundred dollars for the weekend as a pass for camping housing.
I see Mr. Becker writing, so I'm assuming he's calculating.
How many campers you need?
Again, it's hard to say based on.
How many do we fit?
It depends, it, I think we've had state races, like our state finals, that we've had sixty-plus campers there.
You saw, your, your pass was a hundred permits, right?
I'm not positive on that.
I'm not either, I thought I saw that, but I could be wrong.
The big thing for us is doing these national events, we need to make the most lucrative proposal to USA BMX to begin. Twin City Gateway, which is a branch of Explorer Minnesota, is hopping on board with us to help promote this and get the event to the city of Izany. This is going to bring twenty-five hundred to six thousand people to the city that have no reason to come here otherwise. And the big thing that we've seen is people come for the national and they come back again because we got such an awesome facility. We're not looking for event parking throughout the year, we're not looking to change anything above and beyond if we can specifically get one of these national caterer events. Um, our goal, to answer your question, would be to have a national event every year. But per the structure of these national events, there's no revenue from the racing itself that comes to us. It's more the fallout of the extra times that people come and stuff like that that make it worthwhile. We have hard costs to actually put on the event between renting bleachers, dumpsters, porta-potties, stuff like that. So we're looking to have some of that parking revenue as A, some funds to entice the national account, B, to help offset some of those expenses to make having the national event feasible, bringing all these people to town.
Mr. Becker, would you come up with a figure?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, I don't remember what we, what the fee structure we set was. I mean, I've got a spreadsheet on this that, that goes through all that, but I, I for the life of me can't recall. I, I mean, I would probably think of this more as a philosophical question than a strictly financial question, to be honest.
Josh, how much money you think you're going to bring in on this? You, you, you know, you have to make a lucrative deal to the USA BMX, how much money you think you're going to bring in on?
So I would say on average with a national. So I would say on average with a national event, somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars is brought in in parking revenue. The typical national that's getting awarded right now is getting a check from, uh, a sports commission, from a local authority, something like that. They're writing checks to USABMX for eight grand just to get the event to come. So that's what we're competing against to try to get the event. Then on top of that, we have all the expenses of actually doing the event. So the amount of money we gotta spend to get this to happen is huge. But the fallout of what we see of extra people coming back with people now coming during the winter months because we're a destination in the sport. Um, now with the hotel coming to town, they'll have a place to stay right here in town, like, it's a perfect time for us to try to take advantage, especially with having, uh, Gateway stepping up to help us out with it.
I think you're underestimating your parking.
These are numbers based on USABMX.
I'm, I'm just saying, if you take the twenty-five dollar pass per weekend with, that's the discount rate. So that's going on the conservative side, right? And you sent four to six thousand bike, bikers, right, racers?
No. Between twenty-five hundred to six thousand participants.
Twenty-five thou, twenty-five hundred to six thousand people. Okay, so hang on, twenty-five hundred divided by P. So that's eight hundred thirty-three cars times twenty-five. You got twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-three on the conservative end, six thousand divided by three, for how many cars, two thousand cars. At twenty-five on the conservative end for the three-day pass, cause you'll sell some tent, you'll sell someone they passes to for Grammys and Grammys and subcon. You got fifty thousand dollars there. And then you got your camping on top of that.
And if we have two thousand cars there, they're not gonna fit in what we have available for parking.
But that's circulating through. Uh, how much space do we have?
So in the past, we've parked in the grass areas by the buildings that now is gonna have the dog park, so that won't be available. Um, we got that grass area all the way down to the next street to the south there. Um, we're probably gonna have to look at getting into some of the rodeo association's parking area and talking with the soccer complex as well for, um, parking into their areas as well.
And Bluebird Park will be open to the public.
And that, that would be our goal, is that event parking isn't in those lots. So those lots are available for the city to use the regular parks and stuff like that. And we funnel all event parking into the grass areas and.
Mayor, Council, we have, um, we put up installed those one-hour parking at Bluebird Parking Lot to accommodate for when BMX does have their events, that there are residents or community members who wanna come enjoy the playground equipment. We do have those, um, rep, I'm going to estimate about twenty of those. We do have hard parking numbers. I know that we did a configuration of how many cars versus how many campers. When we were factoring in what's the potential revenue, cause at first, the seventy-five, twenty-five split was not what was being discussed within the finance committee at that time. It was, um, it was more hard numbers, but that is, to my knowledge, not requested by BMX. Um, but we do have those, I just don't have them present, so we could discuss those. I could bring those and we would show how much parking was available. I think Bluebird Park has like two hundred eighty-three, but don't quote me on that number.
The other thing I think we need to understand is we need, this building is costing the city more than we ever expected. Just now with the ice stands, look at the north, the east side of the building, it's mass. It's gonna be a lot of money. Um, and we had this conversation at, when, both you guys were there, at one of our development advisory committees. We need to make sure that everything is solvent in this agreement financially for everybody. You, you guys and the city. Um, I don't know, do you guys know much about the Minnesota Cycling Center?
No.
You might wanna look, look into them. How, how long's your agreement with USABMX to not have any competition?
Uh, ten years.
Ten years, USA Cycling Center's reaching seeking state legislation to build a new velodrome. Cause they blame the National Sports Center took, is taking down the velodrome after this year. The, the Minnesota Cycling Center is now seeking state legislation to build an indoor velodrome in Minneapolis along with an indoor BMX track. Which is huge competition against you guys, that you guys should start legislating against. Um, and can, campaign the USABMX against. Um, it's all over their website, I just pulled it off.
The thing is, is if they do build it, it won't be a sanctioned facility.
For another.
Five years.
Five years. And they put a sanctioned facility down there, this place is gone.
I disagree. We're the number one facility in the country. There's three hundred and seventy-five BMX tracks in the country. Last year we dipped to number two because the track in California went out of their way to try to beat us. They had everything short of giving away memberships, stuff like that. The previous two years, three years, we were the number one facility in the country. Right now with the current numbers through the year, we're the number one facility in the country.
But we can't compete with US Bank Stadium. We can't compete with state legislation giving money to Minneapolis to build an indoor facility. That's what I think you guys need to be looking at too. I want you guys to sustain yourself, but I also want the city to sustain that building. Um, and, and the only reason I know about that is cause I love track cycling. And, um, I love track cycling, like going tomorrow, I'm at the velodrome every Thursday night. And when I heard it was being torn down, I started researching where the nearest velodrome is. And that's why I stumbled upon it, and stumbled upon a legislation push, um, and scared the crap out of me. So I just wanted to kinda give you that guy, that heads up, I know it's kinda off subject. Um, but I just think we need to look at this whole animal as a whole to make sure that if we do give a parking thing for this event, that we can still sustain the building, there's still enough cash flowing into the building. Because like I said earlier, that parking lot could have been all yours. But, and that was the time of cabin rating and other people that didn't want it. But that parking lot could have been all yours and you got all the money for it.
And typically with a national event, we're not actually even parking in that lot. USABMX needs room to set up their trailer, their check-in, their sales, you know, team pit, stuff like that. So it's more the looking at the big picture of it, that we're looking to bring a buttload of people into town that won't be here otherwise. Otherwise, people are leaving this town going to another town, like last year to St. Cloud, because they wrote a check to get the national to them. We didn't. Now between partnering with the Gateway Twin Cities and trying to do something here, we're hoping to bring those big events to this city rather than going to a competitor.
I get that, and, and I, I, I get that, but I also just wanna make sure we all look at the big picture of that building too. That building's, that building's yours, it's the city's. But the city is ultimately responsible for it. And we need to make sure that money's going to BMX, we might need to make money, and I know that's been said before. But we also need to make sure the building sustains itself, and I know Mike can work that out.
Mayor, Council, if I may, um, just in the essence of time, for a discussion with, or in regards to the parking, perhaps we look at what we have available for parking, so we have those numbers, what the potential income could be. Perhaps we request Rubber River BMX to tell us what the financials were for them, for their last two nationals, of where the shortcomings were, um, during, in order of the hardships, if you wanna say, for it to have cost those two nationals without parking assistance or a donation from the city of Izzyany. And we could bring that back for another discussion, we have all the information.
Here's the problem though, is, isn't this needed by May first?
Correct, so.
The letter of intent is needed by May first.
So, so the actual deadline for a national proposal is May first. And for us to know what it's going to cost us to do the event dictates what we can put in that proposal. So.
For us to do a letter of intent would be false unless we knew these.
The big difference between now and when we did the previous nationals is that event sponsor check that is the norm in the sport now to get the national event. Per their CEO, the average city is writing a check for eight thousand dollars to get a national event at their facility. Now, like I said, Gateway Twin Cities, we have a meeting with them this Thursday. They're looking to potentially write a check to get the event to come to Minnesota. We're not gonna know that until we have that meeting, but hopefully that's a positive outcome. Um, but regardless of whether they can write a check or not, we have hard cost expense that we have to do to get the event done, which run around that five thousand dollar mark. Uh, last time we had a national, we went business to business in town, got some sponsorship dollars from some of the local businesses that helped make that event possible. But we don't want it to just be a break even, we wanna be able to thrive with the event and hopefully put on a good enough event that they wanna continue to come back to us as well.
So what's the fifty-fifty split?
It all comes down to the numbers, you know, um.
Mayor, Council, if I may, the letter of intent that I believe Rubber River BMX is seeking is that we, the city supports having a national event here. That's what it's been in the past, and Mr. Robinson can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a separate issue. He does not need to have the parking fee or like the money issue in the letter of intent.
So if the letter of intent is all they need by May first, does anybody object to giving that letter of intent?
And in regards?
Well, and that's why I asked if there was any money involved in the letter of intent, because I had no issue with it if there's no money.
Yeah, but you never got that answer, so.
Well, we went into the second thing, right?
Right, so.
But in regards.
With the letter of intent, nobody on this, on this, on this council is disagreeing, that we, we support them one hundred percent.
Right, and so.
We just have to hammer out the parking. We just need to hammer out the numbers.
Right, and I get that they, uh, Rubber River BMX is in a time constraint to get that submitted. However, to have things thoroughly reviewed in an appropriate fashion, we just need more advanced notice. To be able to discuss it here, and we would ultimately bring all the information back to Committee of the Whole next month to discuss it before, then I could go to Council for full vote of approval. So hopefully, Rubber River BMX from a staff perspective can do what they still need to do in terms of hopefully to achieve to get the national, but we would need to discuss parking further.
Yeah.
And I think there's a solution. I think Mike and BMX and staff and everybody can work together to find a solution to make sure the b, the building's sustained, to make sure BMX gets some money, and to make sure everybody's happy. I think there's a solution.
I agree.
You know?
I agree.
I just, I don't think.
And, and perhaps the twenty-five.
From us, a letter of intent. We, we are telling you now, and I won't, I, I don't think anybody would disagree with me, we, we support you one hundred percent.
So basically, the two things that we do need is the letter of intent saying that you're, you backed the event coming to the city. Um, that other piece, like I said, is the financials. And it's, it's more so, if, if we knew we had a hundred percent of the parking revenue, we could write a check for eight grand ourselves to entice that event to come because the numbers will make sense if the event comes. But without knowing that we have the revenue, if we're only working with a twenty-five percent revenue, we're looking at, at best, covering our expenses at the event, not spending the money to entice the event to come.
I guess what I would tell you to do is, is, is you get your, your, your finances in this, of what, you know, what your hard numbers are gonna be for this event, you know, the porta-potties, you know.
Everything.
Recurred costs, it's real close to five thousand.
Come and sit down and clarify that, sir.
And just be honest, don't sugarcoat it, don't, don't play anything, just be honest and we'll get, we'll get a solution.
Absolutely.
And, and even maybe if it was to say we flipped the roles on that parking. We still get something in return, we're helping you all. I would love to see this happen here, but I'm not even that excited, okay? If it doesn't have an order, I ain't messing with it. So, but it draw, I know, and I hear this from people down in Savage. Oh, you're in Icene, that's where you got that great BMX track. I'm hearing this stuff all over in the cities. You don't hear that because you're not doing a good job. You bring in a national event, we're talking people coming from Florida, Texas, Georgia, wherever.
Our last national had twenty-seven different states in the building and four different countries.
So, I mean, it's gonna bring people in. And I'm telling you, you fly from Paris to come over here, you sure ain't gonna be eating on no burner out in the parking lot. They're gonna be going on, they're gonna be going here, they're gonna be going there. You're going to spend, it's gonna be a draw, it's gonna be a community, it's gonna help the community in itself. So let's, give those hard numbers to us. As far as, as, as Mayor Johnson stated, I'll speak for the same thing. You got your letter of intent first, I'm concerned, we need to hammer the rest of it out, soon you get, soon everybody will remember that, I'll tell you.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Josh.
Moving on, let's move to D six, bylaws draft.
Alright, Mayor, Council, so staff has drafted bylaws. And this is by recommendation of the League of Minnesota Cities, other administrative organizations, and is to help both staff and council to have clearly defined rules, procedures, and application of state laws as things are changing. Um, in reviewing our chapter eight of city code, it was very loose, vague, and did not make reference to applicable state statutes in some regards. So this is a very comprehensive, large document. I'm not planning to read this nor go into too much length, but I wanted to make this available as the first rough draft, uh, to see if council would have any recommendations, changes, revisions to be discussed as the next Committee of the Whole in May. So you'll see that everything that we have in chapter eight, for the most part of that article three, is what this would replace. And it is definitely longer and has more great things to help staff and council operate effectively and, um, I think so, black and white. Does council have any questions? Otherwise, there's not, no consensus to make on this at this time, just review and come back in May.
Just need to look at.
Alright, nothing, no questions there, let's move on to D seven. Ordinance amending city code, chapter two thirty, park and recreation areas adding article three, which is the dog park.
Mayor Johnson, City Council, in front of you is the proposed ordinance to add into the park and recreation, a chapter two thirty of the city code, article three, which is on the dog parks. And, um, we added in the rules that were, uh, reviewed and, and recommended from Park and Recreation Culture Board, as well as did some research, uh, J, as far as all children under age of fourteen. That seems to be the common age that other communities have as far as handling of dogs. Um, and so we incorporated that, and also two under D, under two thirty dash nine. We did add in, in the second sentence, provision of dog park facilities approved. And the park board should review the operation of dog park facilities at a minimum on an annual basis so that people do know that this is something that is provided to them and if it is abused, it will be reviewed and it could be taken away at some point. So it incorporates, I believe, everything the council's been looking at, we'd like to go ahead and get it posted and bring it to council for consideration.
I'm all for it.
I agree. Any?
It says this to the board?
Questions, alright, let's move forward to D eight. Amending, uh, city code, chapter two nine five, the tobacco and related, uh, delivery products.
Thank you, and, and what we did is, was your alvo where Izzyany County has updated their ordinance and changed the age requirements for sale of tobacco and to be in a, in facilities um, that where the primary sale is tobacco-related products, uh, to twenty-one. We simply need to make a simple change within our code to apply with that, change of age of eighteen to twenty-one.
Now, questions, does that change just the sale or possession?
That just changes who can be in the shop at the time, that you have to be a minimum age of twenty-one.
Um, and clear, clarification, not just in the store or shop, it's purchasing. You have to be twenty-one years of age to purchase.
But you can still.
And still consume.
Still consume and possess at eighteen.
Well, you could, but it, doesn't that fall under the basis of contributing to a minor?
No, cause they're minors.
So if you buy, if you buy them cigarettes from another city that doesn't have this ordinance, what are you gonna do?
That's true.
I mean, you, we can enforce the sale of it, but I don't think we can enforce the possession as well.
Correct, they, there, this has, Mayor, Council, this has been a big discussion at schools because we do have some eighteen-year-olds in schools, um, in the Cambridge-Izzyany area. So they're looking at that a different issue, but are different.
Which would be nice for the schools, cause then the eighteen-year-olds can't go and supply the sixteen-year-olds.
Correct.
I don't wanna speak for the county, but my interpretation, the meetings that I have attended, that that was a very large driving force of the twenty-one.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm, I'm sorry, let me ask you something on this, where are all the blast pipe sales?
I do not believe that that is included in this, it's just tobacco vape type products.
Yeah.
We don't have one.
I think that's something we should really address. There is, it's, it's coming, do you wanna change it or not? There is gonna be, if BP up here, all of a sudden he's gonna start selling blast pipes. Ross knows about dog and walk. I mean, that's coming, Cambridge, Cambridge already has that ordinance. The law for Cambridge does not allow the sale of blast pipes. That took him three months to get through that, because he had. That took him three months to get through that, because he had proved that he did not sell glass pipes before he could get his license to operate the city.
Mayor Johnson, Council, we have to look into that.
Yeah, maybe a different subject for a different time, I'm sorry.
But I think that if you're gonna amend that, that should be looked at at the same time.
I don't. House member Lundin, it might be the place, because I know that we don't allow vape shops and things like that, perhaps we need to define that further. To include that type of language, so staff would review it.
Dude, just just because you don't have your own one on this order, I mean, you can't also use it on. So I mean, that's why we need to.
Be careful of glass.
Slam it out, sooner than later.
Sure, staff will look into that.
I agree with the tobacco-related delivery products, so I I think we should go forward with that. And then look into Councilman Lundin's.
Okay, so just so, just so staff is understanding consensus of the council, move ahead with the ordinance as proposed, but also look into the glass pipe. Um matter and see if there's some additional amendment that needs to be made.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on to D nine, the ordinance, uh amending the city code, chapter two ninety, tattooing and body piercing.
Mayor Johnson, City Council, the city was approached by a business that actually wants to come into Asante and do have a body art studio. Um back in two thousand and six, the city adopted tattoo body arts facility regulations, because. There was nothing at the state level, and everything was being done at the local level, and I believe. Some of our neighboring communities had adopted those, because those facilities are starting to move onto our areas. Now up till now, we've never had an actual application come forward. So in reviewing this and in talking to the league of Minnesota cities attorneys and the city attorney. Uh we found out that in two thousand and eleven, the state of Minnesota had preempted the licensing of body art technicians, so the technicians themselves. Have to be licensed by the state, as well as they implemented licensing of the studios on a state level. Now local municipalities that had ordinances ahead of the state's uh change in two thousand and eleven. Are allowed to keep their ordinances in place, but their ordinance must meet, if not exceed, state standards. And then that includes everything as far as inspection and and other aspects of it. Staff is recommending that we do the same thing that we did with the gambling code, when the city took over, I mean department, the state took over most of gambling. That we'd go ahead and amend our ordinance to conform to state law. And have the state take over the actual licensing of these facilities, they already licensed, as we said, the body art technicians. They would also been licensed and inspect the facilities. And so that's our recommendation to to move forward with this, if you will have, you're going to have a uh permit application come forward at some point in the future.
Where is that from, where are we looking?
Um credit union mall. In in Mr. Burgley's Business Center.
Credit Union Mall, where's that?
Isn't that, is that, that's what a chiropractor.
Oh, we call it, oh, Asante, Asante Mall.
Okay, thank you.
Is that only the one in credit union drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's right.
I suggest we move forward with that.
I agree, sir, I like it.
Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Which which places are you going to?
I don't, I don't have that information.
We'll discuss that when it comes up in the. Find information. We'll move ahead then and post that. Yes, sir, any any other additions that we have, Ms. Wood?
I do, Mayor Council, I do have two items before you, and this was just information that I wanted to give to you. Uh I did not have this for the admin updates on Friday, so just wanted to print this out. One of them is the calculations regarding the assessments from the ninety-one, um so you had that if needed. And then the other one is an email that I received from uh Ms. Anderson, which. Is just your statement. So you have it before you if needed, I'm gonna share that, and that is all of the council for committee of the whole.
I do have a question on this, on this assessment here. Um seems like a lot of this was done between the um city administrator and the city. Um attorney, are are we gonna have, is that what, is that what most is gonna be, you guys asking questions, or how is this gonna happen?
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
Um public hearing will be, um Clark will be here and he will be uh presiding over, or not, I suppose, Mayor Johnson is presiding over. The public hearings, but he will be here to discuss all that. Um and answer any questions that we may have.
Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Sir.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and Councilman Burgley to adjourn, we stand adjourned.